Evening. It's an honor, privilege, as Mayor of the City of Vator, to officially call this regularly-scheduled city council meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Good welcome all present, and I express our appreciation to you for being here, particularly the law enforcement representatives in Lewis County, whom we know we're in good hands tonight on this. Let's proceed with our roll call.
Okay. Mayor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Andy Wilson?
He's, as you indicated earlier, has called in and indicated he's not feeling well.
Mark Fennison? Haven't heard anything. But you know what? I didn't check the messages either. You can check them after if you want.
Okay. However, we would need, I have not been contacted by Mr. Fennison, so the council would have to make some legislative decision regarding his status.
Well, it's not hard to make. He's absent.
So...
If he comes up, we'll change it.
Still checking the message.
Yeah.
Come in late.
But it would have to be considered an unexcused absence. So, I haven't heard that "you" word yet.
Even if it's, even if he calls in?
Oh, no. If he...
Okay.
It sounded like his voice, didn't it?
He did leave a message.
Oh, excellent.
His wife is not doing well, so...
Well, then, perfect. Discussion.
Not perfect.
No, it's not perfect.
All right. And Joe Schein?
Present.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
And Justin Olson?
Present.
Shy too, but still, no, shy, but...
No, shy's three.
We're short. We're short as councils, but nonetheless, we have a forum, so we'll proceed. As is now customary, we begin with a prayer, and I was going to extend an invitation to the Council Representative Olson to provide that. So, I invite you to join with us.
Dear the Father, Lord, we just thank you, God. Lord, we just pray for your wisdom, God, and your counsel tonight. Lord, we just pray for the leaders of this country, God, Lord, that they just make the wise decisions to lead this country, God. We just pray for wisdom to guide this meeting tonight. I pray for the safety of this community. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. It would be our pleasure to all rise, or the pleasure regents. Mr. Flynn, will you do the honors for us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll proceed with the mayor's report. Item one, the report that the two new planning committee members that were approved by the council at the last meeting have been sworn in, and so they're now legally functional as members of that committee. Very pleased with that.
Does that make our planning committee complete now?
Yes, it is complete. And now they are just ready to rock and roll. Item two, update on the status of hiring a hearing examiner. It remains a challenging thorn in our side. We're, we've decided to re-initiate. We didn't get any feedback first from our initial advertising effort, and so now we're going to try a different strategy. Obviously, in that position, we need to have somebody with legal expertise who's in our local area per se, and who would meet the cost parameters exist for it. So, we're going to contemplate sending a letter to every attorney in the local area, utilizing the phone book as a locative source. So, we'll, unless the council has a penalty of the contrary, we're going to initiate that as soon as possible, and hope that that solicits some feedback. I've actually spoken with one attorney and mentioned that prospect to him, and he himself expressed interest in the position. So, I have a feeling that this little approach is going to generate some business, but it's, that's the latest. The other item I wanted to mention, no, we'll have the last item. That's all I've got for the mayor's report tonight. So, I proceed now with the approval of the agenda.
This is council meeting. I'm sorry, it says agenda. Oh, no, that's right. Wait a minute. I'm sorry. You're doing the right thing.
Oh, that's unusual.
I just jumped the gun there.
I'm quite pleased.
Look up at the setup.
So, I do have one item that I would like the council's consent to add, and it has to do with the potential acquisition of a piece of equipment that would enable us to mow the McMurphy Park and Warden Parks, and do it in a way that makes it more peaceful time-wise. And so, there's been some research conducted on that topic over the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to present that for the council's consideration. Sure. It'll only take a couple of minutes, probably.
Item five, you want that on?
Yeah, item five. The council would consent to that. That would be the only modification I would propose. Might there be any other changes from other council members? Okay?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor that we approve the agenda as noted, or as written, with the exception that number five be added to talk about a mower system for the McMurphy Park.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. You've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Flynn. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Excellent. Now, we'll proceed with the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December 13th, 2014, city council meeting, January 8th, 2015, city council meeting.
Okay. And Mr. Olson has submitted a motion to approve both of those council meetings as written.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Voucher approvals, next item. Hopefully, we've had a chance to review the voucher documentation.
I'll make a motion to approve the voucher for the end of December of 2014, the corrected amount of $57,857. And December 2014, the extended period of $78,273.96, bringing the total for December 2014 to $274,766.59. And the January 2015 total to this point of $25,082.55.
Excellent. And we've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Shy. Do we have a second?
A second, aye.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? It's now time for public comment.
I haven't seen any.
Okay. We've seen none. I suggest we slide into our business items relating to the city. Item number one. I would beg to defer an action of the council that relates to public comment.
Okay.
We received a letter on January 15th from Judy Costello, and she addressed it to City of Vator. And in the letter, it's a kind of donation request. And she informs the reader that it's time again to plan the flower beautification program for 2015 in Vator, and notes that over the past seven years, I have been part of providing flowers at the corner of A and 506. And this year, I'm enhancing the program to include four park benches and 16 more planters in the core area. These benches will allow community members and visitors a place to rest and view the city beautification. And of course, the flowers speak for themselves. As the quote "flower gal" in Vator, I need some financial support this year to accomplish this project. Total cost is $600 for the flowers, pots, potting soil, and benches. My completion date of the project is April 25th, 2015, allowing us to look our best for the first event of the season, the May Day Parade, which has brought hundreds of visitors to our small community for the last 50 years. To date, I have a donation for the benches of $200 and a donation of 50 from the Vator Committee for Community Improvement Towards Flowers. As one of our community leaders, I look to you for support on this project. As always, please call me for details or questions you may have about the project. Quote, "Keeping our community beautiful is very important to me, as I know it is to you," unquote. Signed Judy Costello. So, I felt it appropriate to bring this letter to your attention, because it was, I think, the verbiage and such, it seems to indicate that it would be pertinent to the elected officials of our community. And a couple of issues arose with this that I wanted to share with you as far as perceptions are concerned. She refers to the beautification program for 2015. I'm not aware of the city sponsoring any such program, unless the council members are aware.
I'm not aware of any.
And so, I get the impression that she's taken upon herself to solicit financial support for, to accomplish this project that she refers to, and I'm not aware of any official community sanctioned project involving flowers or the benches. Is the council aware of any such project?
No.
Well, then, my takeaway from this was that obviously, she's acting under the spirit of volunteerism, asking or proceeding with a proactive presumption that there's a project and that she's the director of the program that oversees the project. So, I think she's well-intentioned, but I'm going to just leave it up to the council to provide some form of response, if you deem it appropriate or necessary. But would invite all present to donate if you feel so prompted. There. Any questions about that? Then, Jill, if we could ensure that the copy of this is given to each council member, maybe inform her, and I may, if the council is not opposed to it, talk to her and ask her for clarification as to her phraseology about program and project. Would that be hard-earned for council members?
No, hard-earned for me.
Definitely a worthwhile endeavor.
All right. Thank you for your indulgence. All right. Item number one, council to consider resolution 02-2015, solid waste contract. Obviously, as you've read the enclosures in your agenda bill for tonight, you will notice that our city attorney has reviewed the document, and I believe has been able to iron out verbiage, which is satisfactory to myself and the city clerk and Mr. Cummings. And so, you have this before you to act upon as inspiration and wisdom strikes you. I would turn it over to the council for appropriate discussion and potential action.
I'd like to ask the council to delay their decision for two weeks till the next meeting. There are some other parties that are interested in letting us know what their services would be for recycling and possibly just recycling, garbage and recycling.
For the public, what entity would that be?
This was LeMay. Tom Rupert with LeMay.
So, a two-week extension?
Would that impact Mr. Cummings, who happens to be present with us?
Well, I'm operating without a contract right now, but willing to work with him. I mean, I don't want to put my next three years in jeopardy. Is that, have you approached him, or they approached you, or is it...
Actually, I got ahold of the county, Steve Skinner with Lewis County Waste Management, or Waste, he's the manager up there. And he put me in touch with Tom Rupert. About a month ago, you seemed fairly clear you weren't interested in providing recycling services to the city. So, we're looking for some other, there's a lot of members of the community that want recycling.
Well, I don't want to come up with something. It's just that there's not for free. I mean, I know that the other company has an additional fee for the recycling they offer.
Well, would there be a way to get representatives here, as I presume that you, as you noted, would they come and make a presentation to the community? And would Mr. Cummings, would it be feasible to have him if he were to be sensitive to the council's will, be able to make a similar presentation?
Sure. Right. If you were to have a proposal for recycling services as well, I think that would be great to see.
But I'd have to do a lot of legwork to find out what and how it's handled. I mean, that's all pretty new to me. I've done it before. It's just item by item, you take it to wherever you can, but when they co-mingle, it all goes in a truck and dumped somewhere. I have to run around and find out what, how to do it.
Don't just see a proposal. A lot of people would.
Okay. Well, I can tell you that at least we have a contract that I feel comfortable in presenting to the council. It's there and available on the table, but obviously, it's the council's prerogative to explore all, every and all options that you have an interest in.
Can I comment on this?
Of course.
I have two views about this. I agree with Joe. I'd like to see the proposal. But on the other hand, I was in business also, and I also ran on deadlines. And I would like to see things happen for the city where it would improve, but we have to take into consideration when we have contractors that have been given deadlines and they're meeting those deadlines. And then, because of the lack of abilities on both parts, the contract hasn't been issued. Now, he's being put against the wall again to come up with new contracts, because we have an outside source looking at our business. So, I would like to hear the proposal from LeMay on the pickup, on additions, or whatever it is. But I think we have to be sensitive to the fact that we've had a contractor who's worked with us through all this stuff, and I don't, I just don't like hanging a carrot out there and then pulling the carrot away. So, if we vote on this, I'll vote, I'll vote with Joe on this to delay it, but I want everybody to understand that if we're going to set deadlines for contracts, that everybody should be meeting the same deadlines, and we shouldn't extend it for anybody, for any reason, because then that shows favoritism on our part, and I don't want to be accused of that. It's just, to me, it's just being fair in business.
Okay.
You're out on quite a limb to try to get a contract when there is no contract. I mean, after the fact, this one's expired and it's overdue right now.
I understand all that, and that's why I said what I said.
Yeah.
I understand that.
And to go for bids is one thing, but to, and there's a process, a decision needs to go through to take bids.
I'll agree to it, because I, I want to see things improve, okay? I'm not dissatisfied with the pickup service. I'm very happy. But I have heard the same statements from people that Joe's heard.
Is it 10, or 20, or five people?
I don't keep count of that stuff. I just, people complain and whatever. There's a couple of issues, but I'll get into that when we get further down the contract. I won't discuss them here now. But I just want you to understand that we want the best we can do for what we've got, and I know the city's small and there's problems. And so, we want to look at the possibility, if there's a way of getting, whatever you call it, the recycling business in town, if it can be competitive. Now, I've looked at LeMay's stuff before. From what I saw before, they weren't competitive. Simple as that. But I'm willing to look at it. I'll do it reluctantly, because I want to see it improved.
If, see, I'd have to research and find out how much volume would be, maybe do an extra pickup once a month for recycled goods only, or twice a month. I don't know. It's possible. It's, they may need two garbage cans, but one, I mean, and...
Well, I'll tell you something that surprised me, and that's the reason I'm willing to look at this. Our church put in a used clothing booth outside the church, and I thought, what a waste of time. You know, that little shed they put in there is filled up every two weeks. That's a lot of used clothing. So, let me...
Emptys every two weeks?
They empty it every two weeks. And that, that thing is about, you know, it's up to here. That's a pretty good size shed. Shed, I think it's eight by 12, or something like that. And they, so every two weeks, they're emptying it. There's a lot of stuff. So, I, I didn't think recycling would have anything at all, but there's a recycle right there. So, there is a need. I'll keep quiet. I'm sorry for taking the time.
You can recycle more than...
I know that.
Well, not just, what I'm saying is that with recycling, your garbage, you'll probably have twice as much recyclable goods as you will garbage.
Waste.
Yeah.
That's what I'd like to know.
It is.
I mean, it's, it would be really interesting, and if something was feasible, I just, to train the people, how do you bring different colored cans or something, so they don't mix the wrong stuff in there? And I'd need to learn myself. Could use the same truck, probably, on a different day.
Right.
So, willing to work with you?
So, in the interest of expeditious handling of this, as you mentioned, when might there be the presentation by the LeMay people?
They were going to be here Wednesday at 10:00 AM, just to have an initial meeting and just have an initial meeting and...
Next one?
This following Wednesday, six days from now.
To the council?
No, not to the whole council.
No, it was just an initial, just an initial meeting, just to...
They need information to know how to, to know what parameters there are.
Get my mind around that, so, so. Okay. So, they come to City Hall, and we give them some background information and do that. So, then, at the next council meeting, I'm presuming that they might have something ready to propose? Possibly?
Possibly.
Who knows? But would you come to the next council meeting, or talk with us and share?
Yeah. I'd like to sort of have an inside scoop on this going.
Okay. Then, with the council, I detect approval?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out why we didn't have LeMay, when Jeff first presented his, this contract, or the question, put the contract, why LeMay wasn't, you know, here with that option? Just, because now I feel like we're putting, he did his homework, he's ready to go, and now we kind of have to put him on hold and I'm...
Beg his attention. Well, he did ask me last month about recycling, and I, I just, it's something I don't want to do, because of the extra expense, and I'm having a hard time. I mean, I think the customers are having a hard time, a lot of them, anyway. But it might, like you say, it could reduce the amount of garbage, which would reduce my bill, and I think you can actually sell that load of recyclable. That's what I don't know. And I don't know if they would accept it from me, being not, you know, their company. It's just something I've avoided, because of the extra, twice the work, and twice the amount of time and truck driving and stuff. I do, I like the idea. I don't like throwing away stuff that doesn't need to go on the dump, but I've been avoiding it, along with a lot of things. So, I'm...
Two weeks.
I think I'm going to find out what I need to, pretty quick.
Well, then, to bring this conversation to logical conclusion, I, my sense is that if we were to put our next council meeting's agenda, we might be ready to create some specific action.
Sounds great.
Is that two weeks?
Two weeks, probably today.
It would be appropriate to do a motion, but...
Yeah, probably. Well, but, yeah, would you care to rephrase your...
Yes, I'll make it, I'll make it official. So, I'd like to propose that we postpone the decision on resolution 02-2015, the solid waste contract, until the next regularly-scheduled council meeting.
Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Shy to postpone the discussion on the stated resolution until the next city council meeting. We have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Flynn. Any additional conversation, input? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Cummings, for your patience. You're willing to work with us.
We're in this together.
Yep. Okay. Item number two, council to consider resolution 04-2015, action on the 2015 sewer rate schedule. I trust you've had a chance to review the agenda bill on that particular resolution. And would invite council discussion?
Just like what we proposed, so $1 a month increase?
Yeah. It's an official motion resolution.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve resolution 04-215, a resolution of the city council of City of Vator, Washington repealing resolution 01-214, and any other resolution in direct conflict with resolution 04-215, and setting fees and charges for sewer ordinance 2013-03.
Mr. Flynn, we've submitted a motion to approve this resolution. I was ready. Do we have a second?
Second, aye.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. Additional council commentary? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Council to consider resolution zero-five dash twenty-fifteen, City Planner contract. Similar to the pre, to previous resolutions, I hope you have a chance to read this, I'm quite pleased that we were able to work with our city attorney, who was in contact with the officials associated with the company. And it was, at times, dicey, but they had to compromise and negotiate to eliminate some phrases that created some discomfort for both parties. But the final contract document that you have represents the completed project, which has gotten approval from both sides. And I personally spoke with Dan, what's his last name again?
Penrose.
Penrose. I'm calling him Penrod. But Dan Hennessy, this afternoon, just to see if there might have been some feathers that needed to be smoothed out, might have been ruffled a bit, but they were, but he's fine, and he is quite anxious that the council is going to act on this, to get started by providing the services the city so desperately needs. And there's more than anxious to come and meet the council face to face, so that you see a human being associated with the council. With that little preamble, I'd invite the council to conduct whatever action is appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this. The rest of the council is...
The...
I move to approve resolution zero-five dash two-zero-one-five, authorizing the mayor to execute the on-call planning services agreement with SJC Alliance Consulting Services, substantially in the form attached to this resolution.
Okay, I've heard the resolution noted by Mr. Schei to approve this resolution. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. Last chance for input, comments, concerns. Okay, well, and hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Well, now that we officially congratulate council members, I think you're going to be very impressed with that company and representatives. And I'm very pleased with our city clerk's involvement in it, and working with our city attorney, who needs to be lauded as well for her input. We're being well-served by the individuals that we're paying for. What this means now, with a fully staffed planning committee, and with a planner onboard again, we're, we've returned to the former status that we had with Rob White. And so now all we need is a capital facilities plan, of course, the hearing examiner is still a vacuum that needs to be filled. We're getting closer.
Do we have to have that hearing examiner before we can start enforcing some of the ordinances we have on the books?
Yeah, unfortunately, the ordinance...
Because that's been, I have to, I have to tell you, I am being questioned by people when we're going to do something. And I've told them, this is what's holding us up.
You tell them the truth.
That's right.
I do likewise, I know there's real pressure on them. So we're trying to be as responsive as we possibly can, within the guidelines, parameters, these functions. Be nice to snap the thick of our fingers and the magic wand of some sort. Okay. Let's proceed with item number four, council discussion of employee pay scale and raise structure policies. I hope you recall, our last council meeting, there was an issue of employee, pay issues was raised, and I shared with you some of the consternation, I guess might be a word to use to depict some of the sentiments of our city employees. So I indicated that we do some research, and that we would provide to you an exemplar of what another community has done. We had several, I think there were five altogether. I read them, and this, in my mind, easily represented a, an exemplar, no more, no more than that, captures, I think, the essence or the vision of what I would like the council to consider. Bear in mind that we've not modified this, this is just a direct photocopy of the City of Croweville's personnel policy. And we, of course, would modify it and make it fit the personnel policies that we have in place. But it's the concept that I would invite the council to look at. And I don't believe that any action is necessary tonight. I would just like you to embrace this, and then study it, and perhaps we would reschedule it for our next council meeting, for some more wise and feedback. Are there any thoughts to the contrary, by council members?
Well, this is excellent, I like this. I could see some modifications to this.
And the only comment I made to Jill was, we got a, the position, and especially for Jill's position and Diane's position. I know Jill has to go for training, and she has to get, there's different grades for the position, and we ought to start making notes of those, and in her file, or in the city's file under that position, those grades should be mentioned, and pay, pay increases for passing certain grades and certain qualifications for that. An adjustment would have to be made for the size of our city, but, yeah, we can't compete with Seattle, no way. But anyhow, what I'm saying is that that would be a definite goal, and it gives her more incentive than just to improve herself, but to have a goal that, for a grade increase, was just not indiscriminate raises.
Absolutely.
And the same would go with Diane and the city worker. You know, because they're all, I think our city worker does a good job, and I'd like to decide to keep them. So we don't want to have them bled off somewhere else, so we got to be careful about that. So that's my comment.
I echo those sentiments, too. Well, all right, thank you for that, for that phase of our homework process, and we'll ensure that it's on next council meeting's agenda. The last item was the addition. We had a park board meeting, we have the chairman of the park board with us this evening, we can have Steve Proon here. And in the course of that planning meeting, or the park board meeting, there were a lot of topics discussed, and we didn't include, I mean, you for a report, Steve, on tonight's meeting, but maybe our next council... But one of the talking points was that we're in the off-season now, both parks are, we don't have to maintain landscaping, per se, but now is a primetime for us to consider the equipment we might need, to take some of the maintenance pressures off of the volunteers in our community and the park board. Because we've relied so heavily on volunteers to mow McMurphy, we have the city tractor, of course, and that's, it's working, functioning well, and it's good for breath cutting, but we don't have an apparatus that, I think, makes the lawns actually look like lawns. And so we think we should consider acquiring a piece of equipment that would enable our public works employee, John, to mow the lawn, take, as one would expect a community to have to do. And at times, if there's a big event, and there are times of a problem, maybe volunteers could be backup for that.
What type of equipment are you looking at?
Well, we did some research, just on Craigslist, nothing fancy, and we were looking at units that would mow that had fifty-four inch swath, rather than a forty-two inch.
Right.
So just a simple mower, although there was one lawn tractor, it would be ideal if we had something that could accommodate attachments on the back. And if we go used, then the amount that we scramble together, we think might be feasible, would be between fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars.
Twelve hundred to fifteen hundred.
That's even better. Okay, I got a question for you, we had a, we had a finish mower for the tractor. What happened to that?
We still have it.
Yeah.
Is it in operating condition? I know it's always breaking down or losing a belt or something.
But from my perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure that it's all that effective in making the grass, particularly at Weirden Park, look like it's actually been...
It's too big for Weirden Park, I'm talking McMurphy Park. The finish mower and the tractor are too big for Weirden Park, I would just leave it at that.
Although the challenge, what I think that is being expressed, is if you wanted to get it looking really parked-like for an event like the car club, it takes more than the finishing mower, and so we'd want it more with a little wider cutting base, so that it doesn't take the one person eight hours.
So you're looking at like an attachment to the tractor?
I look at it as a mower.
No, just a separate mower. Yeah, a riding mower. But, go ahead and advise me.
Well, in talking with John about it, he, he was excited about the idea of getting a mower as opposed to a tractor, something a little bit smaller, goes a little bit faster. He says the amount of wear and tear on the tractor is a lot with having to do the mowing with that. The other thing is, is if he has something a little bit smaller wheelbase, he can also use it for doing the sides of the road, and that would be really helpful, because right now he has to weed it all the sides of the road, and that's just a lot. Also, it can be used down at the sewer plant, where the tractor can only be used in a few areas down there, but not all of it. There's just nowhere for it to turn around, and that kind of thing. So he's thinking, you know, getting, getting a big mower type, or, he said, there was a smaller tractor, but he said, you know, you don't really need a tractor, it's the mower with the versatility and the speed.
Oh, he wants one of those zero steer?
Actually, not necessarily. We, we had one that was the zero turning radius or whatever, and he wasn't as excited about that one as he was about...
Fifty-four inch one?
Yeah, there was a John Deere that was a pretty nice tractor, or not tractor, but mower, but in any event, that's, that's my understanding of his perspective on why it would be better. At this point, when he has the tractor, he has to drive the tractor all the way down to the park and all the way back, and that burns up a lot of fuel in the...
We need a trailer behind the truck, so that we can get some mower, and take off instead of driving. I've watched when we had the, what was it, Pet John, that was here, he'd, he'd work four hours and spend three hours driving to and from the park. You know, that's just the way it was, you know, because there's always a slow speed going to and from the park, except when he was coming home, it was faster. But anyhow, all sarcasm apart, I think if we're going to get any type of trail, any type of equipment, we need a trailer to pull it around, so he can hold it behind a truck and go.
Yeah, that has been a challenge for our community for probably fifty years. Just to scramble together enough to get a trailer, it would certainly ease the wear and tear on our equipment. But, baby steps.
So how would you get into the park right now? Just have to drive it?
Yeah.
Or a ramp, I don't see why you couldn't get it up into the flatbed.
Well, that's awfully high.
You think so?
No, I've seen ramps, they hook on the back and they drive right up. Big pickups are high off the ground.
The big flatbeds are...
Yeah, that's got a low deck on it, it's got a high deck. Yeah, that's a low deck.
Seems awfully high to me, but anyway.
Better perspective.
That's because we're all getting over it.
Anyway, this is a concept we just want to run by the council. I would insert here, since it's kind of associated with it, is that Doug Clevinger on the council, I mean, the planning park board, lives on the Vaderwin Lock Highway, and he used to work for the county, and did brush hogging with the equipment the counties got. He saw them doing that near his house, and so he stopped and reacquainted himself with personnel that he used to work with. And he asked them if the county would consider allowing the city to perhaps use their big twenty-foot, you know, trimmed trees and do barrel pits and stuff. So do we know if he's talked to...
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, he was, oh, we got hold of Jeff Corpey, right, with Lewis County, that was what we were going to do. And we got back any feedback?
We haven't set up the appointment yet for John to meet with him, so that he can see, and then give us a quote for what it would cost to do that.
Because the current concern we've got is, and I drove by and looked at it, you probably likewise, is that past McMurphy Park, which is in city property, you've got the trees that are creating, almost connecting at the top, creating a tunnel effect.
Picturesque.
It is picturesque, and we probably might not eliminate all of those, but it is also creating hazard every time the wind blows, because it, limbs tend to drop onto the road surface, creating some issues there. But anyway, my thinking was that if, depending on the price they were charged, they would, you'd incur by using their system, maybe we could use it to clean in the barrel pits with the equipment we don't currently have, on a regular basis. But that's just something that we're still expecting.
I'm all for pursuing it, because I know the struggle they have keeping things mowed, and doing the sides of the roads with a, with a weed heater all the time, it's an endless job.
It is.
You know, I think we would, I really think you'd get your money back, because you'd be able to do other jobs instead of playing the weed heater all day.
Fifteen hundred dollars to get twice as much work from the same person?
Right, right.
It'll pay for itself.
Right.
Well, that's exactly how I've been thinking.
So I would say, let's look at it and see what we can do.
All right, we will continue to research, see if we can narrow down some possibilities. We have to be able to act.
Yeah, what we really need is to, if we're going to buy something used, we kind of need to know what we have as funds available. That's why we did the research and kind, and came up with a twelve to fifteen hundred dollar range, and thought that we could get approval from council up to a certain amount to make this purchase, then when something comes available, we can act on it, we don't have to wait two weeks to talk to council.
That's easy to do, I'll put a motion on the, on the floor right now. Let's set aside fifteen hundred dollars, or up to fifteen hundred dollars for a new mower for the park, and...
Maybe a trailer too, if we see that.
Yeah, and a trailer too, yeah. Why not?
Now, that's decisive action. Thank you.
We're done.
A second then.
Wait, I better get the motion out of the table, maybe. So you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn. We have a second by Mr. Schei. Any further input? Okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Then declare this council meeting adjourned. Thank you for your...
And what's next?
Oh, at six forty-eight P.M.